We'll go ahead and get our meeting started. We'll welcome everybody. We got a lot of folks that have out. Mr. Nesbit's traveling. Let's see if I can get this straight. He's, he's out of the country. Jim Harley's coming back from a meeting and Jimmy Rogers is coming back and Ronnie Clark, I mean, from a meeting and Ronnie Clark is teaching a class tonight. So anyway, we've got a lot of folks out, but we'll catch them up. We'll call them and give them an update on what's going on. And I've had a couple of them ask that we give them an update after the meeting so we can do that tomorrow. But anyway, thanks for everybody that did come and those that couldn't be here, we understand and welcome to our work session. We'll turn it over to the powers that be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up is Ms. Charlie Emmon. She's going to give you an Esser update.
Okay.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, hopefully in your folders, you will have some graphs and some tables of this data is as of December 31st, 2023. The first sheet should be an overall of our Esser 3. That is the only thing left that is still usable and it runs out September 30th. And it's just a summary. The highlighted green, light green are the ones that are totally spin out. I highlighted the one in blue, which is the Competitive After School Robotics Grant. That one is to come because we just received it. And then I've got some notes by the ones that we still have quite a bit left to spend in. And I'd like to address the 181 whenever we get to that one in the back. 188, we haven't started yet. It says 100% remaining because that is for this summer. The, the Youth Employment Program with Heights that you just approved last month. And then the 206 at the bottom is, was for principal retention. And the problem with that one is that the qualifying principals retired, which then made them ineligible to receive the money. So that's the update on that one. So behind it is, the next page is PRC 184. And you can see what was spin on it. You can see that that is, we still have 25,000 remaining in it. And that is our, is for homeless. Next page is on 189. It's the Math Enrichment Programs. That's our drone and our Meredith for Math and our After School Tutoring that is still ongoing. So we still have some money left in that, but we are spending it. We have plans on spending it. The 206 is the principal retention that I've already talked about. And then the last one is the 181, the one where we have most of the money. And we do have some plans on spending that money. We have some upcoming things to bring before you, not today, but with some security cameras, hopefully for all the sites. This is going to be the last year that Esser can take care of the device replacements for our iPads, Chromebooks and laptops. We have some CTE computer labs that are going to be replaced, that are going out of date this year. And we have some summer school plans. And we're still got some HVAC and things that are coming in that we're finishing up. Okay. And you can see on the back of 181, you can see the personnel that is being paid out of 181, which will need to be adjusted for next year. Any questions? It's a lot of papers. I'm sorry.
But your plan, your plan is to take as much of this money as you possibly can.
Absolutely.
Before the time runs out. Very good.
Yes. We will spend it to serve our kids.
So when you say security cameras, are you talking about each school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
AD does.
Yeah, we were looking at it and, you know, our servers, our cameras, they, they, they work. They're good, but they need to be replaced. They're getting close to end of life. And to be able to do it in one fell swoop is something that doesn't happen very often. So we should be able to replace all cameras and all servers at every site to the most modern thing that we can possibly get, which will be great.
Okay, great.
High def.
Absolutely.
4K stuff.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
Where you can actually see somebody.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying the ones we got now don't do that, but when you got a 4K camera versus a regular camera, there's a huge difference.
They've come a long way, you know? Some of ours are still coaxial and stuff like that. So yeah, they'll have a much better image quality.
Yeah, I replaced a bunch of mine. So it makes a big difference. Security. Very good. Do you might have any questions for Ms. Emmon? Thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emmon. You have in your folder, just for information, the most recent survey provided to us by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. They sent out a survey of three potential eight classification models for schools to rank. This is being done because of the approval of eight classification model for the 25 through 29 realignment cycle. Currently, Tuscola sits at 893 students and Pisgah sits at 855. Based on those current numbers and projections over time, the best option for our schools, both of our schools, is the Big 32. This is the best option because it puts both of our schools in the same conference and allows the most wiggle room for ADM changes. I think in some, the next model, Equally Divided, that's the next option of an eight conference or eight system playoff is Equally Divided. This option also puts both schools in the same conference, but only allows Tuscola a 14 student cushion. So we could see them move in and out of classifications, maybe begin in the same conference as Pisgah and then bump out to a larger classification. So that's why that one's our second option. The worst option is the Small 32. This is because it would result in a split conference with Pisgah being in 4A and Tuscola being in 5A. So that's information. Mr. Haynes did a good job coordinating with both schools and getting their feedback from principal and athletic directors. And we submitted our survey responses in this way, what we just said. Option one being Big 32, Equally Divided being Option Two, and then Small 32 where the potential for, well, it's, it's an automatic based on numbers. Right now, they would be in separate conferences. So.
What is the highest ranking now at 4A or?
4A is the current highest division or largest division for ADM, based on ADM.
Well, I thought, and you're going all the way up to 8A, but you're going to give schools better opportunities to compete with schools their own size, really is what you're doing. Sounds to me like any of these options.
It'll be good because as y'all well know, when we fought for Tuscola to be aligned more closely with, with Pisgah, was that several years ago, three or four years ago, they were actually in a division where the, the top of their, their classification, there would be an eight to, a seven to 800 student discrepancy within that division. And so, you know, seven or 800 kids to, more to select from or to field a team from makes a huge difference. And so the eight classification will certainly serve to shrink that range from smallest to largest, as long as they choose the two that we recommend where, you know, our, our numbers evidently statewide must be right on that bubble.
Yeah.
Because, you know, in some of the models they showed, like the last one, which we do not like, you know, you're talking about a 50 student difference that means, you know, Tuscola's in one classification and Pisgah's in another. So we must be right, right there on that bubble between, between divisions.
You know, Mr. Chairman, whether it's good or bad, I, I still firmly believe that the action we took at that time and the fight that we took down there and those meetings we attended and I pitched such a fit, school board meeting, lawyers meetings, that data we got together, I think it just raised the awareness across the state of just how inequitable that old system was.
Correct.
And then there were some people down these picked up on it, the state senator down there.
We got their attention, I'd say.
We did.
I remember it.
We were the start of it. I can say we finished it, but we certainly started it.
Should have. That's right.
It was bad. Just wasn't right.
If we stay in the, the Big 32, if, if they go that route, Pisgah and Tuscola would probably stay in the same conference.
Yeah. That is the one they're most likely to stay in the same conference. They're more in the middle of that classification. So ADM could go up or down and they're likely to, to remain the same. In that next option, which is equal, Equally Divided, that's what they call that option, 14 students could be the difference for Tuscola being in the same conference as Pisgah or not. So it's too small a window. We see a 10 to 20 student fluctuation throughout the year.
What would be the chances if they adopt this and would be in it for what, four years?
Well, uh.
They would bump in the middle of the reclassification, would they?
Well, as it currently stands, it is for four years. But the other thing being questioned or challenged or voted on is, do you want four years or do you want realignment every two? So really a, a complete relook at all of the current operating practices for the High School Athletic Association are being considered. Everything's being questioned and, and challenged. And one of those being the ability to have a two-year realignment.
I don't know whether that'd be good or bad.
Well, the thing is, I see where they're coming from. Cause you take like a Wake County or Mecklenburg, you get one school has a large increase in people, which this state's growing like crazy. You could have a big swing in those ADMs at some of those schools. If they've got the capacity, that's the thing.
Right.
I don't know many schools got a whole lot of capacity laying around down in that area.
But I would agree with Mr. Smythers. That advocacy certainly brought an awareness that others chose to act upon.
Very good.
Now, has the government started their oversight yet? I know, well, a couple of years ago, they pretty much said, we're going to take this stuff away, so on, so on. Then they finally come to terms. They don't let it stay, but then they don't have a, like an oversight committee.
I think it's in that transition period right now, which I'm not sure exactly where it is. I think it's in the transition phase where they kept the old, the old High School Black Association gradually pulling more towards the state taking over. I really, I, I read something about six months ago and I forgot what it said about that.
Yeah. Well, that's what I said. I hadn't seen nothing. I just know there for a little bit, you've seen it. There's really some stuff about it and then they.
The state has definitely taken more control over. They're not out there just on their own anymore.
I think Q said in that breakout session in Greensboro I went to, that she, she said that they're in the talking, planning stage right now as to how things are going to work, trying to figure out how they're going to oversee them, I guess. But I don't think anything had been implemented as of then.
I can tell you that legislatively appeals for athletic violations are already being heard by the legislature, a committee, subcommittee of, of the legislature. So there's already some activity there for greater oversight and greater control of high school athletics. But it, it has forever been their charge to be an arm or an extension of the legislative body with the legislative body providing oversight. And so I, I don't really know how much of that occurred. I'm not saying it didn't occur. It just has not, never been as apparent as it is right now. Any other questions or comments on that?
When will, when, when will we know? Do you know a date?
I don't. Mr. Haynes, do you have one?
I know it's Gavin.
They did not say a date, but it would be for the 25-29 realignment cycle. So there's still one more school year before we'd get to that point anyway.
I know Charlie left, but I mean, you guys probably know this. When, I should have asked her this. So the, the new Esser money, like that's for the robotics grant, does that still end in September?
No, that grant dropped later than the other one. So I think it's the state's way. They've still got Esser money. So they keep dropping these smaller grants. I'm not sure when that runs out.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. But yeah, and that is going great too, by the way. It's an awesome program. Our kids are so excited about it and we have a lot of participation. I'm not sure. I'll text her and I'll let you know.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to be sure.
It, it came later and it was just only for STEM-based activities. And so we tried to take advantage of it.
Very good.
Very good.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions on that, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Haynes for some facility updates.
All right. All right. Chairman Francis, members of the board. So first tonight, you had, like Dr. Putnam said, just some facility updates. First, I just wanted to mention the tracks real quick. So you know, we're, we're getting the tracks resurfaced at both Pisgah and Tuscola. Pisgah's track, it has been milled. It has been lowered. They've done the aggregate. They've compacted the aggregate and they have paved. They actually finished paving today. I went, stopped by there before I got here. So that starts our 30-day window as far as cure time goes. That pavement's got to sit for 30 days and then they'll be able to put the surface on it as long as weather is permitting. So, you know, I think optimistically, potentially by the end of March, that one could be done. So that's exciting. They've, they've moved quickly on it.
Do we have intentions of putting a fence or some kind of barricades around that? I know we've had issues with people driving on the tracks. I have a video of a woman driving on the track before it was dug up. And then somebody said, what are you doing? And she said, oh, I've seen other people do it. I see the coaches do it. So I feel like it's going to be hard to, I mean, that's, you know, how many hundreds of thousands, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars that it's costing. Is there a way to keep it protected now?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about it. And once it's finished, our maintenance department will put a fence up around it. It'll probably be, you know, poles and some sort of cable that just goes through. It'll stop people from being able to drive on it.
Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't have to, just amen, anything to stop actual automobiles and vehicles.
Absolutely. Once we put that, you know, once we get it fixed and we get it fixed right, we, we want it to last.
Yes, we want it to last. Okay, thank you.
Well, we'd just ask the community too, to help us, you know, kind of police that and preserve the, the investment that we've made for the kids to have a quality track surface. So if they can support and help us in that, in that way, we would appreciate it. Absolutely.
And it would be great to be able to, and I don't even know if it'll be possible, and some people won't pay to get in, but it would be so nice for, for track meets to be able to charge admission like we do at other sporting events, where if you did have a little fence around it, people wanted to get inside, sit their chairs or sit at bleachers, if they'll ever have bleachers, but get some income into the track program.
Absolutely. It's something we discussed too, by doing that. Should help, you know.
And everybody wouldn't pay, but a lot of people want to pay because they pay when they go to other schools. So they like, well, what do I pay?
Sure. Absolutely.
Be able to have that opportunity to charge admission to those track meets too.
Absolutely.
Would help or some kind of way to get in.
Absolutely. Next thing I've got is the Tuscola Farm. So that pad and building there, if you've driven by and seen it, it is complete. The, the outside of the building itself at least. Mr. Solis' class, he does masonry and shop for Tuscola. His class is actually going to go in and frame the walls for the bathrooms in there. They're going to frame it in. And then our maintenance department will go in. They'll do the electric. They'll do the drywall, the fixtures, stuff like that. And then at that point, it will be, you know, a usable classroom space and they'll, they'll begin using it. And then, you know, later we'll, we'll work on sewer and go from there. But that, that's moving right along and it's looking nice.
Good deal.
Mr. Haynes, you want to tell them too about the adjacent project to that, hopefully being able to move to restrooms, hopefully at the track facility.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so once we, um, once we are able to run the sewer line from the barn down to the road, we would hopefully be able to tie a cross for the tracks too and put bathrooms over there. So that there are finally bathrooms and a proper concession, stuff like that at that track facility as well.
Very good.
Next, I've got Bethel Middle Baseball and Softball. So that was a grant that we got from the state to do concession stand in bathrooms over there. The, we're just finishing up pulling all the permits and hopefully Rise Construction will be starting next week on that. So that one's moving right along and we should see some, you know, see some building going up there soon.
I'll just add to that. Representative Pless, thank you for providing those funds.
Absolutely.
He's the one who came through on those funds for, for the restrooms at Bethel Middle's Baseball and Softball.
Deal.
And then in addition to that, the, the next one's the Bethel Turf, which also thank you to Representative Pless for, for that grant as well. That one, as we've talked about before, there's just two punch items left, one of them being grass that they're going to go seed. And so they're going to wait till the spring to do that. So we're just kind of holding to, you know, officially finish that project. But it is, you know, the field is done. It, it's ready to roll. There is some grant money left over from that. And we've discussed in Building and Grounds what to do next with that. One thing that we're exploring is redoing the concession stand and the bathrooms that are up on the hill there and making one concession bathroom combo building right there where the, where the current concession stand is. So we're kind of in the process now, looking at what demo would be and the cost of the building and all that stuff and making sure it's feasible to get done.
Okay.
And then lastly, just a field update for everything else. Work's been completed at all the, the fields, you know, the, the flood fields and whatnot from the FEMA projects there, except for a couple contacters on some of the big lights at baseball, but they should be in any time. We'll put those in. And then we just have to get the certificate of occupancy for baseball, which we should have any time as well. And then they will all be done.
Good. Hooray.
Yes, hooray.
I told Mr. Haynes I was a little jealous. I spent my whole time in his role trying to recover from something. He's actually getting to do some fun projects, tracks for kids and, and baseball fields and restrooms. It's, it's, it's nice.
Getting to see projects through.
And kudos to y'all, you know, for your patience through that process. Because that did create, you know, reacting poorly to the flooding could have really emptied the coffers, if you will, for capital projects like this. The reality is, we couldn't have afforded them on our own anyway. We needed FEMA's help. But, you know, if we'd emptied the coffers there and maybe moved hastily, these other projects that, that are going through would not be possible. So thank y'all for your guidance and vision and wisdom in that.
Graham, can I ask?
Sure.
As soon as you said end of March, projected for Pisgah's track to be finished, will we immediately start Tuscolas? Will there be a delay because of spring track? Will they just go to Pisgah and practice?
Well, I mean, I think it'd be a Building and Grounds discussion, you know, and the school discussion currently, what the plan was, because we didn't know how long, know how long it would take to finish Pisgah's, just because it was in rougher shape than Tuscolas. They had coordinated practicing together at Tuscola and doing meets at UNCA, I believe. They coordinated some of that. You know, so the possibility would be there to start sooner, but as of now, the plan is to just to start summertime as soon as, well, really as soon as the season's done, they'll start.
So like May, probably like maybe over in May, end of May, start in June, maybe in the summer?
Yeah, right around there somewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions on facilities? Okay. So we were just talking about FEMA and those fields. So I do have a FEMA appeal update. Mr. Francis actually had asked a couple work sessions ago about our FEMA appeal that we actually did a year ago this month. And I didn't have anything then, but we've found some information now. And it isn't exactly what we wanted, as we probably, you know, had kind of prepared for. But there is some good in it and I'm going to do my best to explain it because it's kind of convoluted, believe it or not.
You're kidding, Mr. Governor.
Yeah. So, uh, the reason we originally did the, the appeal was that it was designated at the time as a large project and it could be a fixed cost. So we could take our, take the money from FEMA and go to a different site if we didn't want to stay here and rebuild. During the whole project, when that was happening, there was a rule change that changed the threshold of a large project to a million. And our project came into a small project. And with a small project, you're not allowed to relocate with the full amount of money. We had emails from FEMA saying that we could still do that even though the rules had changed. But at the end, when we were getting ready to do that, they said, oh yeah, I know you can't do that. You can't have the full amount of money. And then that's kind of where we started the appeal. So, and I get, I wanted to say too, so the, the amount of money, you know, it was around 500,000. When it changed to that small threshold, if we were to move, we could still get the money minus mitigation, but $495,000 of the 500,000 approximately was the mitigation. So we would have only had $5,000 if we relocated. So, so then we, then we appealed. So we finally got, we, we've kind of went back and forth with them along the way. But we finally got the update or the, their, their decision from FEMA. And they said that we were not eligible to appeal after reviewing the appeal because you cannot appeal a rule change, even though we had been told the whole time that we would still get it and we had documentation saying that and so on and so forth. So there, there was nothing there really that they were going to be able to give us. Also, they mentioned that in the process of the appeal, they do an insurance re-review, which they do at the end of every project anyway. So this would have happened regardless. But upon that insurance re-review, they realized that because we've had claims on the building in the past and our insurance is so good and we were getting enough insurance money that actually the money that they told us that they'd give us, we wouldn't have been eligible to get anyway. So, so either way, even if we would have gotten the 500,000 and it would have been ours, by the time we claimed it and had it, at least from what they've explained to us, they would have asked for it back because we really weren't eligible to get it in the first place anyway. The only, you know, good part of all this is that in that re-review, another thing that they noticed was the, the fence that's around the field, right over here, Clyde, you know, ball field back here, that is not covered by insurance, nor was anything, I guess, well, it wasn't covered by insurance. There's never been a claim on that fence. So they have offered us $40,728.48 for the fence, which is more than the 5,000 mitigation we would have got by moving and more, I guess, that we would have got period anyway, since they actually had designated money that they wouldn't, that we weren't eligible for. So, all that to say, out of Building and Grounds Monday, if Building and Grounds is good with it, we'll, we'll do a motion to accept that $40,728.48. um, we'll, we'll do a motion to, uh, accept that forty thousand, seven, twenty-eight, forty-eight. Couple options with it, we could repair the fence and replace, or, 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 excuse me, or replace the fence around the ball field. Our maintenance department has already done that. Um, we had some extra fencing when it went down, they fixed it, so that's been done. Um, but we can actually request an alternate project with this money and, um, something that, and this is not what we have to use it on, but something that we've kind of discussed and of course, it'll be a building and grounds discussion too. Um, there are like all the doors at the current Central Haywood High School or the old Central Elementary, all those doors are old. Um, they're the big glass, single pane windows, um, and we had talked about repairing or, excuse me, replacing all of those. Um, and that happens to be just about that same amount of money. So, um.
That sort of goes in the category of federal regulations on who's on first, what's on second, you know?
I bet you Zeb's familiar with it too, isn't he?
Um, so again, uh, we'll discuss in building and grounds all of that, but, um, if, if they're good with it, um, I would ask, and if the motion comes out, that you all please accept the motion to, uh, you know, take that forty thousand dollars and we'll go from there.
Could you just remind me, so how much did it insurance, I thought?
That's next.
Yeah, how much was the insurance?
Yep, that's next. So, I, that's actually my next thing that I was gonna touch base on. So, um, were there any questions on that? Is that clear as mud?
The fence over here is replaced?
Um, t- the parts that had fallen down, they've fixed and replaced. Is the whole thing not replaced?
I don't know.
It, it's repaired, not replaced.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, it's been repaired and fixed to.
Keeping people out.
Correct.
Vehicles out, I guess.
Correct. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it was just a, a patch job, if you will.
I paid the intention like that and then they're there.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I know they went back and they did, they did repair it, so we can look again if there's spots.
Actually, I don't know. I'm just asking.
I got you. Yes, yeah. Maintenance had said.
Pretty obvious. It ought to be a fence.
We're lucky to have the maintenance department. We have, they're very resourceful. They don't waste anything. And they had fenced from another project and that's what they used to close gaps that were created as a result of the flooding. Otherwise, we'd have been buying new fencing. So, that means we can put this money to other good use.
Absolutely.
Mr. Henson was correct. He said, you can't win the game when they change the rules in the middle of the game.
No, you cannot.
It's on first, it's on second.
Um, so the, my last thing, um, is actually the Central Haywood High School insurance, which, uh, I wanted to talk briefly about and then, um, ask that you approve to accept that, um, if it is, in fact, in fact, comes out as a motion through building and grounds as well. But, so, we have not accepted the insurance funds for Central Haywood High School yet. Um, we were really waiting to see for sure, you know, it was always kind of the talk that we would relocate 'cause to go back in the same place and experience and go through all that over and over again, just doesn't make sense. But, you know, now that we have purchased property and we, you know, we are in the process of relocation, we feel like it's, it's a safe time to go ahead and accept that insurance money. Um, and the reason we hadn't until this point was because, um, the insurance money was nine hundred, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, um, to stay. But if you relocate, it's that less twenty percent, just because you're not having to clean up, you're not having to mitigate, stuff like that. So, um, that insurance, so we wanted to be certain that we were leaving before we accepted the twenty percent less. You know, 'cause if we were gonna stay, we wouldn't do that. So, but since we are, you know, in the process of doing that, um, I would ask, again, if it's a motion out of building and grounds and they decide to do that, that we accept the insurance funds for Central Haywood High School at seven hundred, forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Well, it looks like we're wrapping up some things on that finally.
We, we finally are. Yes, sir.
It wasn't on our list. I mean, I'm not saying it's yours, yeah. Close.
So, we'll be talking about that Monday. So, that's seven hundred and forty-two. So, what exactly do we ha- well, IT still has the main server over there, right? That's the only thing that's really still over there.
That's correct. They've got their server, um, and they've still got some stuff stored and we still have some stuff stored upstairs, but that is the only thing over there.
It's the only thing, okay. Any other questions? Comment?
This is just a continued effort to eliminate flood possibility whenever possible.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanes.
Mr. Chairman, we have no other items for presentation?
Go ahead. Well, you have no, I, I was going to ask you, I seen when I was walking out, that Polk County got three hundred thousand from a safety school grant. Have we got any word of what we're getting out of it?
Yes, sir. We, um, we did get three hundred thousand.
Also?
As well.
Okay.
So, we can discuss that in building and grounds.
Okay.
As to how best to use that money.
And in regard to that too, our application for, uh, from the, uh, state capital infrastructure funds, we've never received a notification one way or the other, but I can tell you that, uh, Macon County has already had, uh, the su- state superintendent out to present a check. I'm pretty sure she knew she drove through Haywood to get there and we didn't get a check on her way through, so. But we will continue to reapply, um, until, you know, we, we feel like we've exhausted that.
And that was for their new high school?
That's correct. One of the things I think we may have to do, and again, this would be a building and grounds discussion down the road, Macon County was committed to creating a new high school. They were way further along in the process than we are. Uh, they had, but mainly because they were gonna do it with or without help from the state. And, you know, if you think about people sitting back evaluating these applications when they come in, you wanna make sure those funds are gonna be put to use for their intended purpose. And so, they probably had, had went as far as to have engineered plans and, uh, grading plans, you know, how they intended, construction plans, how they intended to keep school in operation while they build a new high school. And so, um, you know, I've just encouraged Mr. Hanes to have that conversation with building grounds and, and continue to consider maybe we need to have more advanced plans, uh, maybe it helps our application.
Sounds good. Very good. All right. Is there any other questions before we ask for a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Smith, this is where you take your notes now.
Yep.
I need a motion to go into closed session. We will not come back, so we'll come out of here, we will not be taking any action tonight. We don't have any kind of business that's gonna be taking place, but I do need a motion to go into closed.
I make the motion to go into closed.
Is Mars made the motion to go into closed session? Mr. Burnett made his second. All those first say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with the folks that are here. We'll go into closed session.